Item number seven, motion approved like it feels. You look at the floor, there's just three of them.
Paul Stewart?
Yes.
Parson Page?
Yes.
Item number eight, open discussion concerning jail debt and finances.
I visited with Gail Lurder today, and also Tammy Ingles, and discovered that the $7,400 that you agreed to pay on the shortage in the payment last month has not been done.
No, not as yet. There is none.
What are we waiting on?
Well, what I'm wa- what I would like to have, I'd like to have it from the Attorney General, sign a notarized letter stating that it is legal to take money out of the general fund to pay on the entity that does not belong to the county. And when, and when, excuse me, Marvin, sorry. And when we get that, I have no problems taking money out of the general fund, paying on the jail debt.
Have you asked for that form?
Yes, I've put, I've given it in writing to Farley Ward. I've called our senator, and I've called our state representative, and put it in writing, in an email, to them, and I have had no response.
Do you have a copy of that?
No, I do not. I have a copy, and sure, Farley still has one in his office, that copy. He asked me to put it in written form, and I did. Ed Candidate and Larry Boggs both asked me to put it in written form, and I did. And we, I, we emailed it to them.
Can you give us a copy of that today?
I can call them and ask them, but yes, I, you can walk right up there to Farley's office and get a copy of the letter I sent him, or I just sent him my question on paper.
Send the email, you can pull it, pull it right up, email it.
Well, I didn't email it, Brandy did. I'm not much on computers, but yeah, well, I guess we can. If we can pull it up, yeah. I've emailed both of them, and I handed Farley Ward our question on paper in written form.
Well, last week's meeting, we discussed this in detail about the shortage past due, and it was $7,400, and you guys made a resolution at that time to pay it, and did not bring up no stipulation about continuing any attorney general or anything else.
We didn't do a resolution. That's if we, we did pass it, it's in the sentence, we did go down. Well, Kerry Patton's here Wednesday, our CPA. And once again, we've called, no, he is not allowed in the county.
But why are you going to continue?
But he said, in his opinion, that if this thing does go south, you know, the commissioners could be held responsible for mishandling funds. And I've always been told you cannot spend money out of the general fund unless it pertains to county business. The county cannot go in debt. The county does not own that jail. The trust authority has the jail. So therefore, I have no problem spending the money on it, Brandy. If I, and if it's legal, then it should be no problem to get a letter from them.
Why did you not say last week?
I told you last week, it's on camera, that I wasn't sure if it was legal or not. We told you all along it's not more than what it is.
Well, when are we going to find out?
Well, that's what, that's what I was going to ask you.
Down here, we've been neat.
I said I was going to ask you the question. I have given Farley, in written form, a question to answer, and I have not received an answer. And I've done it through Larry Boggs and Ed Candidate. And like, you know, I've talked to him, and I have not got an answer. So maybe you can talk to him and get an answer. But I, and we can pull it up on the email, I, you know, we emailed him that question. And Gail Dixon said she will. She will not do it, she said.
I know that.
Gail's not going to do it anyway.
She will be ordered to, she has to.
She will, and she's waiting to be ordered to by the Attorney General or the DA. So therefore, she's not going to do it. And I, and like I say, we, go ahead. I'm sorry, Rick, go ahead.
Who drew up the sales tax agreement that you signed?
Where?
The quarter percent? Pledge and, the county pledging all that three quarters percent to the authority.
I'm assuming Jeff Riley.
Is it not legal?
The three quarters percent?
No, it's just, well, the other half and the quarter. It specifically says that the county hereby pledges to the authority all its right title and interest. As a sales tax revenue.
Even if this is legal? It would have been legal for one year, but the county cannot go into a financial obligation for more than one year, so therefore, you would have to sign this every year, just like we do our lease agreements with our equipment through the banks and financial institutions. Every year, you would have to sign this, because the county cannot extend their sale for more than one year. So even if this was legal, Rick, it would be legal for 2014 of that year, and that would be it.
Number three on that document says this agreement shall be binding on the county and the authority until April 1st of 2031.
Well, you can write in there anything you want to write.
Well, you had to have attorney, somebody drew this up, somebody with authority.
Jeff Riley, I'm assuming Jeff Riley wrote it up. Kenny was working with Jeff on that, and I'm assuming.
Kenny specifically got the dates on it that it's good for.
Well, that, that's part of the.
This is not signed by Kenny, this.
I know. I was tearing in that year, and Kenny was, got that together with Jeff, but he, and it probably was good for one year.
Unless date says April 1st of 2031, or until the debt was paid.
I understand that, Rock, but like I said, go read the statutes. The county can only obligate their sale for one year. Every year, we have to re-up all our lease purchases or anything such as that. Every year, you have to sign up again. That's why they have trust authorities, and that's why the county can't legally, does not own that jail.
Well, this is not a lease.
I know, but it's a.
This is, this is binding financial agreement between the county and bond holders. But the county can't enter into a financial agreement more than one year.
Right, the county cannot do that.
Well, how, how did nobody broke the law? Somebody broke the law.
That is correct, that is not correct.
Is correct or not correct?
It is not correct. The county can not only go, can't go for more than one year.
So all of the business transactions that Jeff Riley and his firm has done for the county is, is all questionable?
I'm not going to say that.
Well, you're saying that he drew this up, you suppose, and.
When you said all, when you said all, I, I was just talking about, talking back from the beginning in 2005.
Well, it should all, all be questionable, yeah. If, if every time we look at something, you're saying that it's not right.
It's not what I'm saying, it's just, that's the way the statute's read.
Shouldn't he know the statute if he's the bond attorney?
I agree he should.
Well, we think most of it was questionable, because Farley said in his documents that, in his, the view, the document may not be in strict compliance with 60OS 76. Evident, what Riley set up when they set up the authority, it wasn't even right when they set it up.
Well, it might not have been. Because the bond attorney I talked to last Tuesday, when we was, Tracy and I went up there, and he looked at the paperwork, he said, "I'm not saying it's not right." He said, "I just haven't seen one such as this." And he's going to get back with us this week, and get some more answers from him when he has time to study. But he's, he's going to be back to touch with us if he down here this week.
I think that when we signed this agreement, the sales tax agreement, that we was obligated and bound to the wording in here, just like it would if you signed any other legal document. Surely.
Well, ballots and statutes supersede anything you do.
Well, it might be on some.
Say that again?
What's on the ballot, what you vote on, and what you sign, the statutes and the laws will supersede that in any way or manner. It's if you're signing that. Well, yeah, I wouldn't argue that, Rick. I'm sorry, sorry, Randy, apologize for that.
As far as that quarter percent goes, it was approved by the bond or general fund county used, not the jail there.
That's true, but then, but then this agreement was after that, and it says that the county pledged to the authority to use it.
Well, the bond attorney told me with that, without any doubt, the ballot supersede anything else. He was playing, and he didn't have to research that or anything. He said, "Whatever the ballot says, that's the way it's going to be, that's what people vote on."
So, speaking of new attorney, James Orbison?
Correct.
Have you engaged him to work with the county as a representative of the county's, as a council?
Yes, to educate us on.
Have you been in a legal contract with him?
Not a contract, no.
Have you paid him a retain or anything?
But no, and his response to me was, he said, because I'm not a lawyer, so I have a hard time explaining this, that he wants to work for the trust authority, not the county. And he can explain that to you, why he wants to do that.
Currently, the trust authority is the county commissioners, right?
Yes. And I talked to him about that, and that was one of my questions. It's what we're, the indenture that we're under now, can we add people to the trust authority? And he said, "Yes, it'd be a simple fix." Is that right, Tracy? I mean, it's, it's not that big a deal, when we talked to him, we can reword some of the wording. Because in my opinion, and I'm just one vote, I think we need seven people on it. And that's something that, that I would like to do, but, once again, I'm just one vote, but that's who he wants, said he wanted to work for, the trust authority, not the commissioners.
He said when he comes down this week, he's supposed to have a contract, right? But it will be with the trust authority?
Yes, with the trust authority. And, right, and I don't think it's going to be very complicated if we want to add four members to do so, but.
And he said that he would set up a meeting as the trust authority, do the agenda to get everything legal and starting, I mean, to start.
I have a question. At a meeting a few weeks ago, they said who had to be on the trust authority. You all listed them. One commissioner, then each commissioner would have a representative of their area, and the lady from the jail. I'm assuming.
The magistrate?
Uh-uh, no, not me.
Okay, well, I'm assuming it's a lady.
It is, they're correct.
And then, Gail would sit in, but she wouldn't have a vote. Now, where did that come from? Is that in the statutes, or did someone just? Okay, so you know that those people have to be on that committee if it's in the statutes, right?
If this trust is to oversee the jail, the operations of the jail, it has to be done according to that statute.
Okay, so you know that you're, you're going to have.
Ma'am, but I can tell you now, there's, and I'm not an attorney, and I apologize to you because I probably can't explain it like an attorney, but there's so many different ways of setting it up. That it's hard, it's hard for me to explain, but like, you can do it this way, and you follow these rules, you do it this way, you follow these rules, there's so many different ways, but the way ours is set up, the trust authority as it is now, the way I understand it, can amend it, and we can add people. But I still had a question for him, if we put the sheriff on there, can he still run the jail? Just, that was my main, my main question. He said he could. So it's all depends on how it's rolled up.
Okay, you were going to find out from last, that emergency meeting, or last meeting, whatever. You were going to talk to somebody, attorney or whatever, and find out if it was something? The question was then, did it have to be put before the people for a vote?
No, it does not, the way it's rolled up.
Okay, you found that out.
It's the way ours is rolled up.
There's several different ways, and one of them has to go.
Okay.
Ours is not like that.
Okay, there's, there's three or four you can choose from, okay.
This meeting with the new attorney, what, what date it's in, you said?
There's, well, we don't have a meeting date, so to speak, he's going to be here Wednesday. Who set up, I mean, I'm assuming to set up a meeting scheduled one with the trust authority, but.
He's coming here Wednesday.
He's going to be here Wednesday to look at some documents in Karen's office, some of the bond indentures, and the books that we have in here that we didn't take with us, and he said, "Well, I'll just come down there Wednesday."
So will he just be meeting with the three commissioners, or will you already have the?
He will not be meeting with us, he will be going over the indenture, all the paperwork in Karen's office, the bond books. He'll just be working by himself Wednesday.
I thought something was said about he would meet with the trust authority.
Well, we will have a meeting, but not Wednesday. He will be getting information Wednesday.
So he's just researching all the documentation?
Correct. And then we will set up a meeting.
But will that meeting include, will you have the whole trust authority set up by then, or will it just be the three commissioners?
We will have to have a meeting to set up, to add, if, if we add to it, to add to the trust authority, then we can do it in that meeting.
And who does that?
The trust authority members, which are the commissioners. Is there any more discussion on the jail debt and finances? No.
If, just want to bring it to your attention that on the 25th of this month, you're going to be $11,100 shorter again for the lack of payment. So that's going to bring you up to about 18.5 total, or 7,400 last month, and 11,100 this month. So, when do you anticipate getting an answer, or did you respond to, or not responding, or where we at on, you asked a question through Farley to the Attorney General's office, but have no response, what have we done about finding where we go from there? Have you called him again, wrote another letter, done anything towards getting an answer?
Well, I've talked to Ed, because I see him quite a bit, and Larry, and they, said they was working with. I talked to Larry, matter of fact, I talked to him here, and he said, "It's been talked about at the Attorney General's office, but they haven't given an answer yet." And I'm like, "We, you know, we need an answer." And he said, "Well, we're working on it." So I mean, I'm not familiar with the Attorney General's office, what goes on and what doesn't go on up there, but that was the response that I get.
The, still puts us in violation of our agreement with the bank, not fulfilling our escrow account needs. This is what the county agreed to do, to refinance the debt, and to also secure the junior loan that's going to be down to $14,000 or $450,000. Right now, the debt that's coming up in 2024, which I may remind you, is only seven or eight years away here, is a total of $985,000 in rough money. Less the $42,000 that we have not borrowed on that junior bond, it brings it to $943,000. But this county is going to have to cough up and pay in seven years. That's going to be the jail payment and the junior. We don't need to be in arrears on making our obligations to the bank.
Well, Randy, I think we, everybody in this ring would agree with that, but I'm going to just, I'm going to tell you, as one commissioner, I mean, I do my best to follow the laws and the statutes. Yes, I've messed up, and yes, I've made mistakes, and I've done things that weren't correct. But I'm, I'm going to do my best to follow the statutes. And like I said, when Attorney General, or Farley Ward wants to give me a letter, and he wants to put his name behind me, spending money for something besides for county business out of the general fund, I don't see how we can do it. Now, if one of those two entities wants to sign off and give us a notarized letter and put it in the paper, then I, I think it is sure be, it's a doable deal, but then you're still going to break the courthouse sooner or later.
Well, you signed a sales tax agreement.
Now, hang on, Randy, please. We've been over that, and if it's okay with the other two commissioners, I think we need to move on down there again.
So you don't want to discuss it?
Not any further, but we've discussed that sales tax agreement, and we talked about it when Rick rolled up.
My question still stands, as to what actions have you taken to move forward to the Attorney General's office other than talking to Ed Candidate and Larry Boggs? Have you called the Attorney General's office?
Yes, I have called Attorney General's office. They will not give a county commissioner an answer. They do not respond to county commissioners. You have to go through your senator or through your representative to get an answer from Attorney General. That's the process I went through, Randy. And I have talked to Larry since then, and Ed, and I have not got a response back from him. Now, maybe I ought to be called.
How long ago was this?
I don't know, it's been a couple of weeks ago. But I, the letter I sent Farley, I'm sure is dated.
And you're going to produce that letter here and be it?
Well, you can go up there and get it out, talk to Farley, and I'm sure he'll give you the letter.
Is it Mandy, Brandy?
Brandy typed it up. I, Brandy wrote the letter to Farley, right? I asked her what to write, she typed it. She sent the email to Ed and Larry. The letter to Farley was typed up by Brandy, in my words, and then hand-delivered to Farley. All right, we're going on down to item number nine, open discussion concerning resolution number 25, 2015. Do you hear that, Randy?
I have a resolution. Do you remember it, are you familiar with it?
I have to read it.
All three of you signed it on. Items one through three pretty much pertain to, in case anybody wants a copy of this, we have copies available in this public room. One through three pretty much pertain to finance, we've already covered that, so. Signing this resolution, you agreed to meet with the facility management, legally, recognize the problems, issues, and address and respond, make plans of action to resolve in a reasonable amount of time. Have you all done this?
We've met with you about every Monday.
Not me.
What are you talking about?
The jail.
I've been out there several times.
When was the last time you were there?
I can't remember, Randy. It was, it hadn't been that long ago, because I remember walking through there, talking to the prisoners. Not been too long.
Marvin?
Was out there last week? I'm out there every week, and I talk to the prison all the time.
What's, Clark?
I was out there a week before last. I usually talk to Brian only week to days.
Have you all ever made an unannounced inspection of the facility?
That's what I was doing out there the other day, and that's the reason I know we have the light out, a couple of lights out in that holding facility, there in the booking department. When I make.
Item five is, is the HCPFA will make monthly unannounced inspection of facility grounds with at least one authority member and one commissioner attending. Note deficiencies in conveying writing to the management, sheriff, or administrator. Item six says that shall report findings at the next meeting, take action, engage to bring deficiencies up to reasonable compliance or equipment.
And I'm working on that, because I also have that, that bond attorney going through the bond documents and all the paperwork that, you know, you brought it, you did bring it up, Randy, about the lift supposed to be out there, and I think in the past, when I've been in office once or two, one or two years, I do remember him talking about a lift was supposed to be out there, and I do have, this bond attorney is going to try to find that. And if we should have a lift out there, I'm going to do my best to make sure we get one.
You agree, you agree in this resolution to make these inspections, and the reason for this is to keep the facility compliant back in the disorder that it was in when we started this project back in September October?
And I have been out there. When's the last time? You been out there recently?
This morning.
This morning? Well, you like, go ahead, Marvin. I've been out there, and been on my hand, went out there and worked on the generator a couple of weeks ago. I do make business out there.
Okay, well, right now, there are 37 prisoners in there. There's three air conditioning units not working, one cooling freezer is out, and they need maintenance assistance. Concern, concern here is, is that we don't let this facility fall back in the same disorder that it was in when we started this project.
And Randy, I agree with that.
We worked hard, we worked hard to get this up and keep it up, and, and we don't need to be walking away from it and turning our backs on it like we did for eight years. It wouldn't have gotten that shape if we'd been paying attention to it. And I'm going to ask you to start being more focused about it, all of you. It's your responsibility as commissioners of the county to make sure that that facility is kept up. And we've made great strides in getting it kept up, in getting it up to par, and it's going to be deplorable for it to go back down.
Item number eight, there's no rights in touching. Item number nine is just discussion. Item number 10, open discussion concerning handling of the county public facilities, authority, trust, indenture.
Who is on that?
Who is on that? The HCP, who all is on that?
I'm assuming it would be the three commissioners.
Should say this is the committee, it's the three commissioners now.
But anyway, Randy, on the open facility authority trust convention, you have that?
I do have. Have y'all accepted legally the, and took over the successors to the previous commissioners?
I had, the lawyer did read that, and you're, when you become a commissioner, you're automatically only took the authority the way he said it was written up. And we've been sworn in.
And when were you sworn in?
Last week, some one night.
So, Paul, you've been serving for how many years?
This'll be, ten, big ten in January.
Marvin, you're three and a half. Clark, you're four and a half. And you're just now getting sworn in?
That'd be correct, Randy.
Last Wednesday.
I think, I'm not gonna swear that today. It was one day last week.
So my question is now, is, is that if you have been sworn in, and all these actions that have been made and taken, are they legal?
There's never been no one that had meetings or nothing else. Only been sworn in since the first time it's been built, only Sam, Sam, Henry, and Kenny.
Are y'all having meetings like you should have?
Well, I, that's another thing, no, we have not, Randy. And I talked to the attorney, and we did, and Tracy, we did question him on who all he works for, and what he's done. And he said, like, when you, when we get our meetings going, you'll have, like, you'll need them, have them as you need them, but after that, he said, once a year, we have plenty, in his opinion.
What does the convention say?
We're gonna find out, 'cause he's gonna go put it for us.
Have you ever read this trust convention?
Not, not a hun, not all the way through, no.
You think you might oughta need to?
I think I oughta hire a lawyer to do it, because I'm gonna tell you, Randy-
It's not that complicated.
That may not be, but-
It does spell out that you'll recognize the open acts, uh, open meeting, public meeting, acts, laws, and you'll abide by them.
Well, I know that.
If you knew that, Paul, why have you never had any meetings?
As you said, we would abide by the open meeting laws, and if we had a meeting, I would abide by them. I mean, we, we're not up there to, Randy, trying to do something illegal. I mean, if we had a trust authority meeting, we'd, we'd go by the laws to the best of our ability.
I was gone Tuesday and Wednesday without a tail on business. Understand, you had emergency meetings, is that correct?
Well, we're on item number ten and, uh-
Okay, I am too. Did you have an emergency meeting Tuesday and Wednesday?
No, I guess technically, we didn't have one Tuesday. We did Wednesday.
What was the emergency?
To get the PO signs, or everybody be paid.
You carry concern, you, you consider that an emergency?
Yes, I do. And if you read the statutes that I read, it gives us a lot with that. But I mean, I don't know what, what the big deal is, but Randy, hey, we, we made a mistake on the agenda for that Monday. We corrected it, we signed the, all we did was sign POs like we just did this morning to get every, all our vendors paid.
You don't understand what the big deal is. All the big deal is, is that you have certain things that you have to follow when you have a public meeting.
And I know that, Randy. And we followed the laws, the emergency meeting laws, to the best of our ability. And I agree with you one hundred percent, no argument. We need to follow the laws, and there was a mistake made on the agenda on that Monday that sent us, that put us in that situation. And that, and that's all I can tell you.
How do you let people know there's going to be an emergency meeting?
Called paper.
But the paper doesn't come out-
Karen has the, the statute, we'll be more than happy to give it to you and you read it for yourself.
Okay, well, I just wondered, 'cause I, I got the word and I came, but, and that was Tuesday.
And then, I don't-
I just wondered how, how you got the word out, 'cause it is an open meeting, I wonder how you got the word out to people.
We called the newspaper, just like the statute.
But the paper didn't come out until Thursday, and the meeting was on Tuesday.
Once again, we're more than happy to give you that, the laws on emergency meetings, you can read it, she can print it in the paper, or whatever, and then the whole county will know.
As they should.
And I agree with you. And I, I'm gonna tell you something, I appreciate everybody being in this room, 'cause I think everybody oughta be involved in their county government.
I agree.
And hey, we have been jarring across the carpet on some things, as we should've been. And you know, we, there are things we should've been, we need to have been straightened up on, and you know, we're doing our best to do everything to the letter of the law.
And we do appreciate that, we do.
And I, and I, regardless, I appreciate y'all being here. And I appreciate the efforts of everybody, 'cause I think through our county and state government, I think more people need to be involved in it. But anyway, that being said, gonna be no action, I guess on item number ten. We'll go down to item number eleven, open discussion concerning the sales tax agreement dated June first, two thousand fourteen, from the National County Commission, National County Public Facility Authority. I think we touched on that once. We, we touched on that once.
Brought into the finance part of it.
Randy? Go ahead.
I guess, Paul, we'd like to see, hear, be part of, or whatever, to find out where we're at with the Attorney General's office. If you are unsuccessful in getting a commitment from him or a signing, then would you care if we push forward on this?
I would appreciate that you would. Yeah, 'cause I mean, I've talked to all three people that I mentioned. And put it in writ, written form. And I, I mean, other than, I mean, 'cause Farley asked me to put it, put it on paper, so I did. I mean, I don't know what else to-
Tim step out?
I don't know what else to do, but, but I did talk to Tim, and he said he was gonna check on that for us. I talked to him this weekend, 'cause he, you know, works for us.
Are you willing to us investigating that at the Attorney General's office?
About the legality of this?
I have no problem with it. You can get an answer from him.
Then we'll attempt to.
I appreciate that, 'cause I, they're not responding to me. Okay, no action on number eleven. Well, there is action on number eleven, I apologize, that Randy is gonna assist the commissioners in getting an answer.
Randy, Rick and Rock.
Randy, okay, I apologize. Randy, Rick and Rock are gonna assist the commissioners in getting, all right, question
Here, here's Tim, right here.
Tim, have you had, you had opportunity to talk to Farley?
I have not, there, I went up there, they're picking our jury.
I figured Monday'd be a bad date, but, all right. So now, number twelve, discuss and take possible action to approve payments for parcel number two, is that Taloka Creek?
Yeah, you signed both.
Except the bridge brother syrupal?
No, it's out there off of Eight Street, out there, Full West Side.
Sugar syrupal?
Middle North Side.
River with the strip?
Yeah, River with the strip, it's like-
Okay, it's got temporary ten yards in it, is that correct?
I made a motion on item number eleven. I apologize for that. Number twelve. Clark second, number one, favor.
Marvin, I will.
Yes.
Clark, the fair.
Yes.
Yes. And Clark, I'm assuming you have your success relief? You wanna make that motion?
Yeah, I'll make that.
Need a motion on item number thirteen. Clark-
Same thing, we approved for all of this.
Clark made the motion on item number thirteen, Marvin second, number one, favor.
Clark, the fair. Marvin, I will.
Yes.
Paul, story.
Item number fourteen is just a court account about juveniles, all the sudden here is business. On the terms, we give a thirty-day notice, we can back out ten years, within that year, at least, at least not do business with them anymore. We need a motion on item number fourteen.
Clark, the fair.
Yeah.
Marvin, I will.
Yes.
Paul, story.
Now, I'm on fifteen, I'm gonna make a motion with your adjournment.
I got a question before we do that.
We just adjourned, what's your question?
Well, you can adjourn.
No, we, I'm, I'm listening, I'm listening to your question.
In Oklahoma statutes, emergency meeting means any meeting called for the purpose of dealing with emergency, for purposes of the Oklahoma Open Meeting Act, and emergency is defined as a situation involved injury to persons or injury and damage to public or personal property, or immediate financial loss from the time requirements for public notice of a special meeting would make such procedure impractical and increase the likelihood of injure or damage or immediate financial loss.
Okay.
That doesn't pertain to sign the POs.
I think it does, in my interpretation, because one, one of those POs is for the sewer or the plumber or something up here that could flood our courthouse out, and we, he worked for us, and we didn't pay him, and what we're gonna do next time we call?
Is this a what here?
No. Well, one of those, a couple of those POs in there, which we can go over them, they were some of our vendors, and how we're gonna keep asking them to work for us if we don't pay them on a dime a matter. And I understand what you're going with this, Randy, and I'm gonna tell you. I mean, I, the agenda should've been done properly, I'm, I'm not arguing that. But all we did was sign POs so we could pay our vendors. And that, you know, should it've been done different that Monday? Yes, it should've. And yes, there was a mistake made. But all we were trying to do was pay our vendors, that was it. We wasn't trying to slip anything by anybody.
Well, that's why you have an open act meeting call.
Right.
So that, that can't happen anymore.
And we don't want it to happen.
Historically, it has happened. And, and that's why there is an open meeting act, so that there is transparency in all the government, if it happens.
Correct.
And it's just like, you walk around, I asked ten people this weekend, did you know we borrowed four hundred fifty thousand dollars in two thousand fourteen? They had no idea.
That's their fault.
Well, it wasn't advertised in the paper that we were doing anything like that, it shouldn't have been.
It's, no, the meeting was advertised-
We have a question about-
The meeting was advertised in the paper.
Well, that's my next question. Karen, do you have an agenda, the minutes, and the documents for the meeting that was held for the junior loan?
Absolutely.
Can you produce that for us?
Man, that thing, Randy, you know, just like all this on the agenda, I've been told, you know, I've been open with the public, 'cause what I've been told, I don't have to have this on the agenda. The commissioners have the right to pick and choose a lot of what's on the agenda. I'm glad you put that on there, I'm glad we've talked about it, but nobody can say that this board of county commissioners don't want the public to be involved or educated on their problem. Because technically, we've already talked about all those things, we didn't have to have that on the agenda, we could've took it off, but we didn't. And I appreciate you being here, and I appreciate your questions, but I mean, as far as people trying to make the assumption that the commissioners are trying to hide something, that's just not true.
No, it's not, it's not that they're accusing you of hiding anything last week, it's just that you don't ever do it, you don't ever have that question, eliminate it.
I agree upon, I agree, but it's the-
The question, Paul, is, did you have a meeting, a public meeting, saying you was gonna refinance the jail, and did you have a public meeting saying you was gonna borrow the four hundred fifty thousand junior loan?
Yes.
You had a public meeting?
Yes.
A, a jail authority meeting?
No, not a jail authority.
Who borrowed the money?
That's a good question.
Well, you were the board member who borrowed the money?
Let me back up on that, Randy.
Was it the commissioners borrowed it, or the, or the board members?
Let me, you asked me a question, I'm trying to answer. We would have to go back to the minutes, 'cause we might've had a trust authority meeting.
Well, you might've had one, you said that, that y'all haven't ever had one.
I said we, no, Marvin said, I said we're gonna have to go back and check on that, and, and Randy requested that information, and Karen's gonna do her best to get it for him. But I'll be honest with you, Rick, not to, I'd say, if I know the cameras are out on me, that's fine. This has been a learning experience for myself about trust authorities. When I walk in here, and I'm sure, I don't, I believe everybody in this room could learn a lot about trust authorities and the legal aspects of this that I know nothing about.
Well, it don't really have anything to do with the trust authorities so much, it's, it's your open meeting act. Uh, you're supposed to have meetings to do all this business that it appears to haven't been.
Well, if there's not been, Rick, Rick-
It's a jail thing, but we got you right at the first.
But Karen, did you borrow, how did you refinance it, and how did you borrow money for it if you never had a meeting to vote on it?
Well, let's wait, and Karen's, I know she's gonna be able to produce that, and we'll get that, Randy, and look at it, and we'll discuss it then. Then that way, we'll know exactly what we're talking about.
Well, in an earlier meeting, all four of you said that y'all have never had a board member meeting for the jail. Is that true?
I, I do know whenever we were, we talked, we had the assistant DA in here, and that's when it was decide, I put like, it was decided to borrow the four hundred fifty thousand. There was, we did have a meeting on it, and I, I don't remember if that was a trust authority meeting or a county commissioner meeting, 'cause I cannot remember every meeting, but like I said, Randy's gonna get that information, Rick, and then we'll know, and there won't be no, I thought, he thought, or what I thought, if we go back. 'Cause I'm sure Karen can pull it up out of her office. And I'm sure she can do it today.
Yeah, I'm not gonna throw that on her, Karen, I was fixing to ask you, what would be a convenient timeframe?
Probably tomorrow sometime, since I've gotta do all this.
Okay, that's fine.
But Rick, I'm gonna tell you, I probably, I made a lot of mistakes, and I, I'm having to learn a lot of this on the run.
I understand, but the question is between people in the public and the county about this, and they're wanting to know.
And I, and they shouldn't, and they deserve an answer, and that's one, and I know Karen and Randy will come up, or Karen will get it, and-
Well, if you had a meeting, there, there's a detailed documented set of minutes for Karen's office.
Right, and I'm sure she can find it, and we'll-
Every time the authority actually has a meeting, there should be a, a separate set of minutes for it, shouldn't it?
Yes, definitely.
Okay, but, but Karen was asked that question here from meetings back, and she said she didn't have anything.
No, once they got to the third, then you think I didn't say-
You didn't know, you said you didn't ever know they had a meeting.
I didn't even read it, being a minister.
We, I, I'm def, sure we can come up with it, Karen will come up with it.